Well, first of all, matter of the first of all, you know, it's not pushing off and living one of my, I want to see if my line is up some medical issues. And the fire department did a really good job along with the Auburn, all the end people getting her in the hospital at the time of the man recently. She's, she's still going strong, struggling a little bit, but for Oak Point, firing and Auburn is about to do this as well.
Chief Roj also want to mention your, the citizens academy that you've started. I've attended and I, I find it to be very informative. It's a great learning experience. Thank y'all for going to all the trouble to put that on board. Okay, agenda item number nine, report from council liaison, update on the park February meeting. Scott usually does that. He is out sick. Update on the economic development corporation February meeting. Greg, can you help us with that?
I can highlight a few points. Um, our staff and a couple of members of the EDC attended the ICSC, which is a retail convention that was held at, it's a regional, it was held at the Sheraton in Dallas. And attending that tended to be the representatives of basic franchise chains and restaurants, groceries, whatever. Retail companies there are. Um, and we were able to make some connection with a few of those to highlight what's going down in Oak Point and the opportunities that are available there. Um, we had a presentation also from, so EDC and the city contract with a retail consultant to help us attract business to Oak Point and to help negotiate those opportunities. Um, we had a, a Mars presentation from them, it's called Catalyst. It was rather disappointing because our primary point contact, Jason, was not available and he had two of his colleagues representing Catalyst and presenting somewhat of a, of a, of a basic rundown of the kind of retailers they were, they have on the target list. Some of that is input from, from the EDC, some of it from citizens. It was dominated primarily with casual restaurants and casual dining, I guess they call it. A few groceries were also on the, on the target list. The EDC board tended to give them some feedback that if you wanted to see the list expanded a little bit, be a little more discriminating about the kinds of retailers we're trying to attract that will differentiate us from, from the surrounding communities. And to sort of expand it beyond just some, some restaurants and things to get some basic services also. They don't point things like being a dry cleaner, a veterinarian, or things like that. So the, the upshot of that, I think, was that Jason will be presenting at the next meeting to kind of close some of those gaps and questions that were, that were positive. The other significant issue that was addressed was our weightlining signs. It's an ongoing project that's been going on for, going on a couple of years, I think, and through maybe some miscommunication or, or lack of understanding of technical regulations, our, the consultant who was responsible for advising us in building out the signs apparently missed some specifications resulting in us having to go back and add some more signs for an additional maybe twenty-three thousand dollars or something like that. And so that was approved. And those signs will be, be installed probably coming up in the next few months. So I think that's the highlights.
Thank you, Greg. Consent agenda, agenda item number 10, consider an act upon the minutes of the January 17th, 2024 city council regular meeting. Agenda item 11, consider an act upon a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a joint election agreement and contract for election services with the Ditten County Elections Administrator regarding the county's coordination, supervision, and operation of the city's general election to be held on Saturday, May the 4th, 2024. Agenda item 12, consider an act to approve a resolution authorizing city manager or his designate to execute a local agreement with the Ditten County Criminal District Attorney's Office regarding forfeit and confidence. Agenda item 13, consider an act to approve a resolution to adopt an investment policy. Agenda item 14, consider an act to approve a resolution to adopt an inter-local cooperation contract with the Texas Department of Public Safety for failure to appear program. And agenda item 15, consider an act upon a resolution authorizing continued participation with the steering committee of cities served by Encore and authorizing the payment of 10 cents per capita to the steering committee to fund regulatory and legal proceedings and activities related to Encore Electric Laboratory Company, LLC. Counsel, is there a motion to approve these, approve the consent agenda in whole? Or is the council member want to remove any of these agenda items for further discussion?
Make a motion to approve all under the consent agenda. That's just pretty exciting.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Proten Lusk. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by council member Paul Wiki. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Onto the regular agenda, agenda item number 16. Conduct a public hearing to hear comments regarding amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Oak Point, Texas on approximately 1.168 acres of land located in the B.E.S. survey abstract 938A, city of Oak Point, Ditten County, Texas, and an approximately 2.1618 acres of land consisting of lot 1, block A of the Pisterzy addition, in addition to the city of Oak Point, Texas, Ditten County, Texas, by changing the zoning on said tracts of land from single-family residential estate district minimum five acres, RE5, to single-family residential district minimum 22,000 square feet, R2. Mr. Parker?
I'm here. This is an application by order of our commissioners, planning and zoning commissioners, to consolidate two part properties that he has on Fox Hollow and in order to combine them to make one large property for his homestead. The current zoning on this property is, is five acre minimum lot size. When you combine these two lots, they don't get there. And so the property that's immediately south of this property is zone R2, which allows for a much smaller lot size. Our, our 22,000 square foot, half an acre lots, basically. And after my review, this application is consistent with our future land use map. And the planning and zoning commission has recommended approval. I'm glad to answer any questions that we have after the public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing at 6:30 8 PM. Does anyone wish to speak? If so, please come to the podium. No one wishes to speak, we will close the public hearing. It is still 6:30 8 PM.
Yeah, mayor, I'm glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel?
Have we received any, anybody from Fox Hollow have any input to the town, for or against?
The, I think we had two and they were in favor. No, no one against.
Is there any further questions?
And Mr. Hoffman is here, if there are questions for him.
Yeah, the future land use plan, what is that?
It recommends lot sizes of one to three acres and both of these tracts are more than an acre already.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to agenda item 17, consider an act to approve amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance. I'm not going to repeat everything that I just read in 16.
I'm hoping to approve, as we're doing.
My second motion.
We have a motion by council member Wyler. And we have a second by deputy mayor Proten Bastid. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Agenda item 18, conduct a public hearing to hear comments regarding amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Oak Point, Texas by amending chapter 14, exhibit 14A, section 14 entitled non-conforming uses, structures, and lots by adding a subsection entitled compensation for non-conforming uses by requiring the use of compensation criteria required by section 211.019 of the Texas Local Government Code and amending chapter 14, exhibit 14A, section 15 of the Code of Ordinances by adding a new subsection, C, I'm sorry, 2.2C, 3C by establishing notice requirements for non-conforming uses.
I'll take that.
Would you like to answer this? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, counsel. Uh, really the next four items, uh, the next two ordinances are basically cleanup ordinances given the, the past legislative session. And so this particular ordinance is a response to Senate Bill 929 that got passed this past session. Senator Ken Parker was the author of that, of that legislation. And so under Senate Bill 929, it requires certain notices that have to be given. If we're going to do a rezone, that's going to result in a, a non-conforming use. There, there's also provisions that if we're going to try to prohibit that continued use after the rezone, then there, there's certain notices. We have to, instead of amortizing the use, we basically have to pay compensation. These are usually in, I guess, bigger cities when you're dealing with some heavy industry and now it's right next to residential area and so the city wants to do away with that pre-existing use. And so, but, you know, given the statute, uh, you know, TML had provided some guidance on this as well that there's certain language that trying to put into your ordinances. So that, that's what this, this ordinance and the next ordinance does is, is do some cleanup given the legislation. So we're trying to stay consistent with what state law provides. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Questions up?
Can you ask a question now?
Uh, yeah, so. So just, yeah, quick question. So this is, somebody has something existing, we want to change it. Which is zoning or the regulation for use of that property? And the landlord doesn't have a say because we're going to do that, but in order to make them whole, we have to uptake them based on.
Well, let me give you an example. If, um, your house is zoned residential and then the city's going to zone it retail. And you still get to continue to use your house as, as residential because it, it's what is now called a pre-existing non-conforming use. You've changed the zoning to retail, but you have, you've already have an existing use and you're allowed to continue with, with that use. Sometimes referred to as grandfathered in or grandfathered uses. But you get to continue to use that property as your house. Now, if the city were to say, no, you need to cease using your house as residential, the city would have to pay. And there's certain procedures that you have to go through. So even through a rezone, you get to continue that pre-existing use. It's only if the city wants to stop that use. Usually it's, you've got a lead smelter, is, is an example. It's next to residential now. Now, you want to stop that lead smelting operation right next to residential. Well, this statute now says, you know, city, yeah, you can do that, but you got to pay and, 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 you know, stop that use. Uh, and so, you know, I, I don't think we're going to counter that here at Oak Point. But the, the bill necessitates a cleanup. So, yeah, we could rezone property, but the person still gets to use that pre-existing use. Well, also, let's say they abandoned the use. Let's say the house is no longer used for residential. They start using it as an antique store and it gets for more than a year. They started using it as retail, or zoning says retail town. So then they would have abandoned the residential use and they can't go back to the residential. That is how that could work.
You said a year, is that an example or is that a statute?
That, that's, it's going to be based on our, our Code of Ordinances, which I think is a year. I'd have to double check. Usually like six months or a year. Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeff? If not, we'll open the public hearing at 6:46 PM. Does anyone wish to speak? No one has come home. Would you like to speak?
Just a question.
Of course.
Uh, to the extent I see different amendments proposed regarding certain zoning ordinances and the like, are these posted for public comment in advance and where can we review those before they're voted upon? My question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just to be the agenda packet, that, that's where they would be.
So, so is the actual, are the, is the actual text of the amendments made available for public review?
Any zoning amendment also has to be published in the newspaper. And so, and then P and Z would hold, the planning zoning commission would hold a public hearing. They make a recommendation that comes to city council. City council would hold a public hearing, but there's publication of proposed zoning changes.
So the public hearings are voted on the website. They're also part, and the ordinance is part of the agenda packet this evening.
So the website is the place to go.
The website's the place to go.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Is anyone else wish to speak? If not, the public hearing is closed at 6:47. Agenda item number 19, consider an act to approve amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Oak Point, Texas by amending chapter 14, exhibit 14A, section 14 entitled non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. I'm not going to repeat it. It's the same thing that's already been written to the record. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the amendment, amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
My second.
We have a motion by council member Horatio. And we have a second by deputy mayor Proten Bastid. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Agenda item 20, conduct a public hearing to hear comments regarding amending chapter 10, article 10.03, 03.003 entitled definitions by amending or adding definitions for approval, filing date, and plat, amending section 10.03.004 entitled application of regulations by adding subsections F and G by establishing approval of plats by city manager or his designate and providing for a 30-day timeframe for plat approvals and extensions thereof. Jeff?
Well, good evening again. Um, again, this is a cleanup provision. It's from House Bill 3699. That was passed this legislative session regarding plats. You may remember, I guess, about two years ago, we, we did an amendment to, to define when, when is a plat filed? This past session that this bill, House Bill 3699, because that was kind of unanswered questions. The cities were defining, okay, when is a, a plat filed? And so with this legislation, they, they defined when a, a plat is filed. So in the, let's say when you've got the ordinance in front of you, uh, one of the definitions is filing date. We're amending that to be consistent with state law. So this is all a cleanup given House Bill 3699. They also, the legislature authorized, uh, that, you know, the, the city and the applicant, typically you've got, got an act on a plat within 30 days. There, there can be some room for extension. Let's say at the very end, section four of that ordinance, proposed ordinance, allows for the extension of that 30-day period. Let's say developers trying to work something out to, to get it consistent with the city code. Instead of just denying the plat because it doesn't meet our requirements, we can kind of, the applicant and the city can extend that 30-day period. So that, that's what section four does. It also, in, in certain instances, uh, allows the city via city manager or other designate or staff person to go ahead and approve a plat in certain instances. And so we have that in section three. That if, if, if there's insufficient time for the planning zoning commission or city council to act on the plat, uh, that, you know, the, the filing date, that, you know, the city manager may approve or disapprove. And then the statute lays out a mechanism for appeal process. So, I mean, all the sections two, three, and four of the proposed ordinance, uh, those are all additions to the, the, the current Code of Ordinances and it's clean up to be consistent with House Bill 3699. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Oh, yes, I have several questions. Um, so I just first want to understand 30 days. That, the statute.
Yes, it's in, in the statute.
And that 30-day timer starts from the filing date?
Right. And that was, before this legislation, that was a question. When, when's the filing date? If you write something on a napkin, turn it in, that starts the 30-day clock. And it doesn't mean our requirements and it, the council doesn't meet within that 30 days, is that on a napkin deemed approved? And so the legislature heard, you know, those sort of comments and then they went and defined what would constitute a filing date. Uh, and that's the, that first def, full definition on page two.
Filing date would be just to turn my documentation in.
And it means require, requirements. And they pay the applicable fees and all that as well.
So everything's, the officials are going to be listening to data.
Yeah. If they've, you know, dotted all their i's, you know, crossed all their t's, submit that, you know, pay the fees. Uh, then, you know, they submit, that starts a 30-day clock that if, if we don't act on it within 30 days, it's, it's deemed approved. Now, again, we can, applicant and city can kick the can under that last provision in the ordinance. Uh, but there's that 30-day clock that hangs over plats that we've got to act on it within the 30-day period. Typically, unless there's a, unless the applicant and city say, hey, let's, let's, you know, push this off for another meeting.
So that, so the extension is one next question. So the extension of like the 30-day action. Explain that a little more depth.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's straight from the statute under chapter 212 of the Local Government Code. Uh, you know, on an application brought in by the applicant. So again, the developer comes in. Uh, you know, the, the planning and zoning commission or city, you know, if it goes to P and Z or city council, uh, then, you know, either one can, uh, you know, do the 30-day extension.
In relation to the filing date, at what point would 30-day extension be requested? Who would request it?
Anytime within that 30-day period.
Okay, so anytime within 30 days.
Yeah.
We could request that they extend it or only.
We, we could. And we, we, I think we would need their, their permission.
Yeah, they're great to. How many times can we have an extension?
By, 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 I think, if, if both parties want to agree.
My next question then, and this is a, well, one common to the question. So 30 days from the filing, uh, within that 30 days, there's going to be a planning zone meeting. There's going to be a city council meeting. We're going to have meetings of our city bodies. That's how we operate.
And the 30-day starts again with P and Z, you know, P and Z meets and then, you know, it'd be 30 days for city council to, to act on it, just to, to be clear.
Okay, so but.
But we would, typically we meet, you know, a week, a week apart.
Right. So what I'm saying is if I, if I file something, as soon as you got 30 days to act on it, well, within 30 days, planning zone is going to be.
Right.
So then we've got the city manager approval. This is where I have a concern. I forget exactly where it's, that detail. So it's in the actual definition of what the individual that can be reported. Very simple, it's a, so, 211.65, the donor body may appoint an individual, which in this case would be city manager. That individual, city manager, may go to play in some, or may not. And the third key item we see is the applicant can appeal this.
See, typically what will happen, I mean, under what's called the vested rights statute. It's chapter 250, 245 of the Local Government Code. A submission that meets the city requirements, we can't change those requirements midstream. When they submit for, under the statute, for their first permit, that kind of locks in the city requirements. These are, when you submit, that's the requirements. Okay? So for a plat that meets the requirements at, at the time of submission, it, I think you've heard, it referred to as ministerial duty. We have to prove it if it meets the requirements. If it doesn't meet the requirements, then, yeah, we can approve with conditions or, or, or disapprove. This kind of place, let's say, you know, we're not going to, P and Z is not going to meet in 30 days. Staff and everybody says, hey, this plat meets the requirements. And so here, you know, it gives authority for the, you know, city manager staff to go ahead and approve that plat that meets the city's requirements. And this is all done with the, I, I guess, for the benefit of developers, you know, streamlined to get it, you know, if it meets the requirements, then, you know, the, we have to prove the plat.
So it would be approved only in a, as a minister of function?
Correct. If, if, if it meets our requirements.
But if it meets requirements, the city manager or planning and zoning would be held to the exact same requirement. It is a minister of function and either one of those.
No, it doesn't allow the city manager's staff to say, okay, we're going to approve it, but you got to meet these other requirements, conditionally approved. Or if it doesn't meet the requirements, to disapprove it. And then there's an, an appeal process.
Well, I just, I just wanted to establish that if we make this change, then.
Well, the change is, the change is consistent with state law.
It's not interpreting. It's not, it wasn't planning, so you say, well.
We're trying to get the ordinance consistent with state law, given the legislative change.
Sure, but it's not required that we approve anybody else. The planning, we say, you know, we've got 30 days, the planning zone is going to have a meeting. If they don't have a meeting scheduled, a special session, just like we would for just to say, we've got a meeting, we need to meet so we can approve this plat or move it to this plat.
As far as the city manager part, but yeah, we, we would have to act on it 30 days, within 30 days under state law.
That's what I'm trying to establish.
So I think a point is if, if, if you don't act in the 30 days, state law says it's automatically approved. approved. So if we couldn't get a meeting together and the plat clearly was not meeting all the ministerial requirements of the plat, we need to be able to somehow deny it, so.
Right, no, I understand. I just want to be sure that, that there's no, nothing's been taken away from planning and zoning.
No, no.
You understand what I'm saying?
No.
If you've got a body of seven people here making decisions, as opposed to a single individual making decisions, if there's any.
But that looks like just kind of spoken here. They said, these are the requirements, and we're trying to get the ordinance to be consistent with state law. Essentially, what we're talking about is, this is ministerial. Yes.
And ultimately, that's how I'm trying to clarify, because we do not have to approve a city manager approval. We can say it has to be planning and zoning, because that's optional for us. That wording is whatever, we like, we want the city manager, or we want to say, it has to be planning and zoning, or whatever body that we choose to make that.
Well, state law allows for the city through some staff member to.
So it allows, but it's not required.
Right.
Requirements are, that's ministerial and these other.
It's beneficial to do that, you know, given what, you know, Stephen indicated, you know, if we're not going to meet, and it's going to be deemed approved, even though it's deficient, you know, staff can say, no, it's deficient, we're going to disapprove. They have an appeal process if they think we're, you know, the city manager or staff got it wrong, that there's an appeal process to appeal to you all to say, no, we think our application's complete.
Would it be a situation where one body, such as city manager, might say, yes, we could this plat, whereas if it's also took that same thing, planning and zoning, they would deny it. It's still ministerial, so shoot that, right? If it meets the criteria, then that's.
I would say generally, if it meets our requirements, both P and Z, and council's going to approve it. If it doesn't meet our requirements, then I would think that, you know, recommendation would be to disapprove or conditionally approve. Clean up A, B, and C, clean up deficiencies that's conditionally approved, that, you know, we would provide that sort of direction.
Well, what I'm trying to avoid is that situation where we have an instance that we have a single individual whose decision can supersede potentially what a body of seven would have to decide.
No, this, I only.
No, that's.
I only perceive this happening when there's scheduling difficulties, is when this would come up.
All right. Just. State law.
All right. What?
So the appeal process in one of those instances, is that then go back to P and Z and then to the council, or not?
It depends on where it was. I mean, here, P and Z only have some plats here, and so some cities do it differently, where it goes to P and Z and city council. So it would go from city manager or from staff to P and Z.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeff? If not, I'll open the public hearing at 7:02 PM. Has anyone wished to speak? No one came forward, so we're closing the public hearing at 7:02 PM. Agenda item 21, consider an act to approve amending, Chapter 10, Article 10.03, entitled Subdivision Ordinance by amending section 10.03.003, entitled Definitions, by amending or adding definitions for approval by date and plat. Agree the rest of the agenda items, because we've already done that in the previous agenda items.
I have a motion to put out.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lusk and a second by Councilmember Wyler. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I have one additional question along those lines, and that is, if, at what point then do we determine that the city manager needs to be the one to make a decision?
I mean, I think we could answer that pretty easy. If there was no way that P and Z could meet, and that that plat was either going to have to be approved or rejected by the city manager, or it was just automatically going to be deemed approved, I'd rather at least have a set of eyes on it and say, hey, we've looked at it, meets all the ministerial requirements.
Well, I'm just saying, if we've got a 30-day window, and planning and zoning is going to meet three weeks into it, and then they don't meet, then if you're concerned, you have to.
Right, so I mean.
If somebody dropped off a plat two to three days before P and Z, we're not going to meet that 30-day requirement.
Right.
So if we couldn't hold a special meeting, an additional special meeting with P and Z, then it's either going to be deemed approved or.
Right, it would be automatically deemed approved if we don't, if we don't review it and approve it, or deny it, or approve it with the conditions.
So I'm just trying to figure this out, so as you were saying, you know, it requires seven to hours.
Exactly.
So that would create a situation.
Right. That's currently what we had in place before this, was we had scheduled, you only drop plats off on a certain day. That assured us the 30-day time frame to get it to P and Z. And now we can do that.
Now, so they're showing supply date, which has a certain date on those dates, there's only going to have them.
So the day they show up, the clock starts, we call it a clock shot rule, and so as Johnny mentioned, we had a particular day of the week that we would accept plats, and we wouldn't accept them any other day. Now, this new statute says if they show up the day after the P and Z meeting, that starts day one, so now we wouldn't be able to meet that 30-day requirement. So we'd start trying to call P and Z meetings, but we just were unsuccessful, then, especially if it was a plat that we saw that had deficiencies, I'd rather, you know, reject it or something with, rather than let it be approved.
Yeah, what else could happen is, let's say, you have a P and Z meeting scheduled, and then there's no form, and you're getting up there that 30-day window, you can't reschedule a meeting, so administratively, you handle it administratively.
There's no further questions? We'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Agenda item 22, consider an act to approve a change order in the amount of $22,474 for weight finding signs being purchased by the Oak Point Economic Development Corporation. Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the item that Councilmember Wyler referred to earlier with the EDC. The EDC recommended approval of the change order. We originally approved, went out to bid on this project back in May of '23, came in at $141,852, included one gateway monument sign, three welcome signs, two large vehicular signs, and three medium vehicular guide signs. Tech dot has submitted some rules to us, saying that each sign cannot, each, each large vehicular sign that's in there right away can only indicate three locations, it cannot have any, for example, special characters such as forward slashes, ampersands, things like that. Our signs had, you know, City Hall's forward slash DPS and pointing right, and then it had yacht club and polo clubs, so it was technically four locations they deemed it. And then they deemed the hashtag as a special character. A hashtag, yeah, yeah, forward slash, as a special character, and they denied it. We've been back and forth with them on multiple occasions. I coincidentally just happened to be in Denton over the weekend, and I was paying special attention to their weight finding signs along 380, but, and they're all correct, they all had three locations, you know, and arrow, none of them had four. Now, we've pointed out, Little Elm currently has some signs that have everything that they said they can't have, so we're not real certain. Little Elm just didn't have some signs printed, put them up due to getting the tech dot permitting, but the tech dot is aware of them at this point. This is actually a better solution. It adds two larger vehicular signs and one smaller sign. The signs at McCormick will change those to say police department, city hall, fire department, pointing that direction. And then we'll go down to the Martin Gale sign, and we'll point back the polo clubs and yacht club back on those two. So it'll give us some overall better directions instead of trying to cram it all into one intersection. It kind of spreads it out. The cost of that, to add those signs, was $22,000. It was consistent with our bid pricing, and I put that in the packet for you to look at as well. There were some costs that we've been discussing with them on, shipping and, what was the other costs?
Installation.
Not installation, because installation was consistent with the bid price, but let me find the change order, I know it's in here. That's not the change order, that's the original bid. Did we not get the actual change order?
Trip charge.
It was the trip charge. So their thought on the trip charge was, they thought they were going to come out and put the original signs up and then come back out and put in these additional signs, and we said, no, we're fine if you just manufacture them all and come at one time, so we don't have to have an additional trip charge. And that, at the same time, would also eliminate the additional shipping charges. So overall, their change order was the 22, and I don't have a packet, so I'm trying to read it from my phone.
Four seventy-four.
Twenty-two, four seventy-four, but it's likely going to be less than that by.
Couple thousand, right?
Yeah, a couple thousand dollars. But EDC did recommend approval, so staff also recommends approval. We feel like this is overall a better, better solution ultimately.
I don't have a question, but Stephen, maybe it's always, I'm trying to find these funds. I need to find that.
So they.
Maybe the funds from the public year.
Source of funds for EDC.
Oh, so these funds are funded from the Economic Development Corporation, from half cent sales tax that the EDC collects. That's the funding source that would pay this additional $22,474. I think there's some rule of thumb, and Jeffrey might know it better than me, that some like 60% of those funds come from outside your city limits or something like that. But, but there are funds.
Yeah, the type B can pay for certain ties.
Right.
Any questions for Stephen?
So I think, Stephen, the question at EDC was, do we have any recourse back to Corbin for the advice they gave us on how this all came about to begin with?
Well, we went back to, to the sign manufacturer, IMG, they were talking about different states or changing different rules all the time, so they said, I forget how many projects they told us, that they're having these same issues with the DOTs changing their rules. So I don't know that Corbin is really at fault, or did DOT change their rules? I mean, when I look at, I look at Little Elm, and they've got a sign up that has six locations, an ampersand, slash, and, you know, arrows pointing up and down, right and left, it's like, did they approve this, or did Little Elm just put it out there? I don't know. But I don't know that this is really a Corbin issue as much as it's just a DOT issue.
Have we engaged them to discuss that?
I have not. I think Dever did reach out to Corbin, but I have not reached out to Corbin, but I believe Dever did. I'm dealing basically with the sign manufacturer, trying to get it moving along, so.
Any other questions for Stephen? If not, is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve a change order in the amount of $22,474, three hundred cents. I think there's seven points.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Horatio. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Lusk. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We have a split vote, Johnny. Councilmember Wyler is the dissenting vote. The motion passes. Agenda item 23, update on live streaming of city meetings. Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We currently are live streaming right now, so.
No.
But we ran some tests today, and all seemed to work fine, but I don't know if it's interfered with our current recording, or it's just typical problems with it, but, I mean, I'm watching you guys on my phone right now, so.
Is this a pilot, or is this live somewhere?
It's just streaming live on YouTube right now. So you can, I plugged in earlier today on our Facebook page and put a link to it, and said, hey, you know, check it out, we're trying it out tonight. So we are, we are running it, we were kind of low-tech, we looked at a lot of ways of doing it, and none of it was easy, so we're recording off a mic here, and there's a camera mounted up on top of this monitor that can see the dyes. I've kind of tuned in, I can, I can hear what's going on on my phone as well. But we had an issue when we went to start our, our normal recordings, and I don't know if it's just equipment issue or it interfered, so we'll have to, we'll have to work out some bugs, but we're streaming.
Should we find a way for the other, like, you can tell them?
Right now, we're just trying to do it for this, just to see if we can get it worked out, if we can work it out and figure out an easy way to do it.
It sounds expensive. We looked at some, it was very expensive.
Right, this is a very low-budget process is the way we're going about doing it right now, but it, it seems like it works.
So you're streaming live on YouTube, so then this is also recorded and watched later on YouTube?
Yeah, so once it, once we hit in-streaming, it'll roll it up and it'll, it'll place it there on the, and you have to go to, when you go to our Facebook, our YouTube page, you have to click, you have videos, home and live, so you click on live, and you can see the videos that are there. Like, right now, I'm looking, and I can see, I can see we're live right now.
Thank you for this setup, and I'll ask to test it.
Yeah, I mean, we're just running a test, if we can see how it's working, how it's going to work for us, you know. I'm looking at ways, if there's a way to integrate that soundboard back into the, into the microphone, so we don't have to have this microphone, so, but it's, it's not a, it's, I'm not, I'm not a real super tech savvy person, but I've had super tech savvy people come in here and look at this thing, and I can't figure it out, so.
But this seems to be working, as well as slow tech.
It's, slow tech is working, but I don't know if it interfered with my high tech, because it's not working right now, so.
But at least we've got a recording, worst case scenario, we can take that and record it to you.
Well, that's what we finally decided, when we said, let's just keep going with the meeting, we've got this working, so.
Ultimately, we still have to have a permanent recording, you know, separate.
Right.
In case we keep.
From Oliver Hafner.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Agenda item 24, discussion about ambulance services. Chief Rumsch?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I could, I'd like to bring up the Tanyu Sanzino real quick, too. We have a little slideshow for you, hoping I've got, or hoping he's got enough information that you're really looking for. If you haven't met him, this is the Tanyu Sanzino, if I take just a moment, I'd like to at least thank him and express our honor to him and have brought him on board, and his continued dedication to his service for us day in and day out, his extensive knowledge of the fire industry and particularly in EMS field, and I think he's a great asset to us.
That's wonderful.
There we go. So this is pretty much his handiwork. This is some information that we've obtained over the last several months, kind of looking into this project. This is just an example of what, if we were to move forward with this, this is what's possibly available to us right now. It's an international chassis, so that's kind of what an ambulance would look like for us in the future, if possibility occurs. Next slide. So he's put together some information, kind of leads us to why we've come to this decision that is probably in our best interest to move forward with this for us. Just due to the regional growth in the area, Auburn, the response times have increased. They're no longer servicing the crossroads area, so they really have no reason to be down this far south. They do have a station still off of 380 at Navo, but there's some changes apparently in the mix with that as well. Increased growth with traffic, construction on 377 has delayed their times. There's another slide coming up here in just a minute, it's got some of those times. Ultimately.
Excuse me for interrupting.
Sure.
Crossroads.
Crossroads has gone to the city of Little Elm. Ultimately, the city of Auburn, Auburn Fire Department has determined it's not longer feasible for them to continue service down here due to those barriers. It's taken their ambulances farther and further out of their service area, and is depleting their services and resources for their citizens as well. Population influx of development growth is putting a strain on all our EMS resources in the area. We've experienced that by the fact of having both Auburn ambulances in town, having to neutralize a Little Elm ambulance within minutes of the same two calls initially, and then requesting a fourth ambulance for a fourth call within a few minutes from Lake City. Doesn't happen often, but it's happening more and more often where we're depleting. And that leaves ambulances pretty much to where you don't have anything any closer other than Denton, some line up at the point, and it's a pretty good run from there. Obviously, the trend is continuing to strain the infrastructure, creating a need for additional resources, not just for us, but for everybody. Next slide. Uh. The following times, we did some research on our new CAD system. We only went back the last six months. This new CAD system came in play in August. So we just used those times for the timestamps on their call responses. We use Crescent Oaks just to have a centrally located area of the city as opposed to something further north or further south. It wasn't really representative to use South Oak or, you know, Cross Oak Ranch at the North End and further south end. So this is a good central location area to pull up samples from. Six months of data, two random EMDS calls per month. Their response times out of all those calls are averaging fifteen minutes. That's from calling out to arrival. As we indicate there, they're usually around seventeen, give or take. There are some times where they happen to be coming back from the hospital. So they're right there on three eighty before they turn north. It's great when they're there. It's not often. But in that average, again, we're running fifteen minutes. This is from probably six to eight minutes several years ago. So that's increasing. Next slide. We have a couple of options. Obviously, Aubrey is probably no longer the option. The option with them, even at this point, is discussions of increased cost to remain with them, even under the current standards, but not necessarily to the extent that they would be in a position to continue that even with that additional cost right now. Additional cost is kind of being brought up to supplement some of the expense they're carrying as it is right now. So option one would be go to Little, Little, Little Elm. They're the closest. I don't believe there's probably an option to go with another agency. Example being Lake City's, be the next closest. Option two, that we continue to evaluate the ability to provide our own ambulance service. That would be preferred, in our opinion. Next slide.
When you say preferred, in our opinion, tell us some of the reasons. I understand that response time is one and getting control of our own.
One, I, I think there's something huge to be said about control of it. If you have differences in that side of matters, something as simple as that, policies, procedures, issues, personnel issues, you don't have a lot of control in that. I don't feel just in general that anybody's gonna serve their citizens more than the people who work for them. It's not to say that they don't provide good service, Aubrey, Little Elm, or any other agency. There's just something to be concerned about that you always wonder if you're getting the same service you would from people who you work for or work for you. That's an opinion.
For example, if you have an ambulance need in, in two different areas, the ambulance is likely gonna go to the location.
Could be. You could run into that where there might be a preference in who their responsibility is really geared towards. They could, you could experience that. I don't know if I would really venture to say a circumstance, but I mean, yeah, you could have an ambulance that might be taking off one call for another and another one brought in from an area that might change times, but that would be based on the call type and things like that. So it's not a standard, but I wouldn't say you couldn't, say it could happen. So part of the information he's got on here is, should we desire to go with Little Elm? There have been discussions. I know there is an area that they currently serve that's more around a sixteen fifty per rooftop. There could easily be an expectation that if we were to look to them, none of these numbers are for certain. This is just a discussion. We could look as low as that, but they are also looking at other areas where there are hard numbers that they're around a sixteen fifty house and within a few years going up to the twenty-two fifty.
So at one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars per month?
So the seventy-five hundred homes we're using for our current full area for all of our in-city and our ETJ, all of our fire service and EMS service area. That breaks down to twenty, twenty-one hundred in-city, twenty-one hundred across the ranch, two thousand or so in the PIS, things like that.
It depends on all this. We're not having ETJ and fire.
This would initially be the city's money. Some of that would be recouped through PIS or through other avenues. But that's essentially what a bill would be to the agency from the agency.
Okay. That's very expensive.
What's our current cost with the recovery?
Well, it is a contract that's been in place for many years. It is no longer, it will offer down. We're in the under thirty thousand now.
Thirty thousand per year?
Yes. That's not, that's not something that's really, you wouldn't ever see that anywhere.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to understand the thing.
And that's some of theirs that it's, it's just not feasible for them to do. I'm sorry?
Why have they not tried to raise it up?
Contract, part of that. Contract loud.
Contract that long?
It was a five-year contract. They had to, they'd have to give us a year's notice to cancel it.
How far, how far into the five-year program?
We're about year four to year five.
So it's coming up on that time where you can expect their renewal contract to be in the four hundreds, five hundreds.
Yeah, have they actually given this?
Five fifty-four.
I just don't think they're gonna let it renew.
Chief, he said notice, not numbers.
Sorry?
Councilmember Horatio said have they given us notice. Is that correct? Notice, not numbers?
Not notice for changing that contract, but in discussions, yes, they mentioned what the cost would be.
So their next thing is that at the end of five years, it doesn't matter, you should not notice, right? Contracts out, contracts out?
Yeah, once the contract's done, they're, they're not going to renew the contract unless we're willing to. Feas, feasibly, which doesn't make sense for them to cover unless they actually staffed an ambulance here. For what they're, what they would want to staff an ambulance here is probably as much or not more than what we could staff our own ambulance.
And then, and then that's still their personnel, their equipment, or just housing. There's still the issue with that concern is that it's not necessarily dedicated. It's still liable to be called out to another agency or minority, which still hasn't been discussed. So those are just numbers. It's, the, the twenty-two fifty is an expected cost that some of these other neighborhoods are going to be at based on those contracts. Next slide. So Little Elm is actually in the process of acquiring Pluma Creek, Montan South, Savannah, and Earlbrook. So that will just further restrain those resources. You're probably aware that Spiritos Ranch is coming in. The number's actually gonna be, we put two thousand plus home. I think the number's actually thirty, three thousand, thirty-one hundred, somewhere near. So that's Station Four that's coming in there. They're already serving the three eighty corridor, which is getting nothing but busier and bigger. They still service crossroads. It will then be taking on the additional call volume from Station Three for those two areas, Pluma Creek, Savannah, and Earlbrook, which brings in the concerns of are they going to be able to serve us satisfactorily?
Where's Station Three or Station Four?
Excuse me?
Where's Station Three or where's Station Four?
Station Four's gonna be the one there off of Spiritos Ranch, seven twenty near North End, south of three eighty, and then Station Three's out towards Navo.
Is there a million dollar or something?
No.
At least they're signing.
That one's expected to come in probably later. Twenty-five, probably later.
Chief Rump, I understand there's issues with Little Elm servicing crossroads and that a nine-one-one call from crossroads goes to Denton County Sheriff's.
There has been some things that we've made aware of, some concerns with that, them after them acquiring that contract from Aubrey. So the way they currently did it, Little Elm felt they were big enough that they needed to go ahead and, and change dispatching agencies. So generally, the nine-one-one system set up, everything dispatches through the county. They currently use Denton City as their dispatching agency. So we're seeing an average of three to four, three to five minute time loss in between that transition from calls coming in to the dispatch agency in county to then transfer to Denton City to then dispatch to the actual units.
And are people at that point are in the same situation? Are nine-one-one calls go to Denton County Sheriff's, or does that have to go to another one?
Correct. So, and we're seeing that commonly on where we're doing mutual aid or something like that. We're seeing that time delay. It, it's just, it's unavoidable. When you have those two agencies, you have to make those calls back and forth.
It's a separate issue, right?
Yes. So they, it was a couple of years ago too, is when they made the decision to go to a separate dispatch by using, I don't know what the purpose of that was or what their, wasn't involved in any of that. But that's how currently it is. They use Denton City and we use Denton County. Next slide. Option two, next. Obviously, if we were to continue evaluating this, needed staffing, we would, we would initially like and prefer to acquire nine firefighter paramedics that would adequately staff our, an ambulance with three personnel, all paramedics, without encroaching on any of our current fire service suppression needs for the staff we have. NFDA requires four-man engine, so we have that now. If we lower that, then we lower that standard. Due to the market demand, firefighter paramedics are in high demand within the region. So we would also evaluate the options of hiring firefighter EMTs or single role paramedics with the option of they come in as firefighter EMT, which is what many departments do. They bring them in as an EMT with a specific timeline to acquire a paramedic. Most departments have moved to that firefighter paramedic is the standard. If they do bring in EMTs, they're under a timeline on acquiring their paramedic license or certification. Same thing with single role paramedics. If you bring them in as paramedic, you have that EMS side covered. And then it is much more cost effective to provide a fire academy to then turn them cross-trained over to fire side.
And haven't you already started that process?
We have started that with four. We just, we're doing it with the firefighter EMTs that we're EMTs currently, and they are in paramedic school right now. And that has been a lot of Chief Shantin's work with our medical control to get approval to advance some of our procedures on our EMT basic levels and things like that to move to more ALS care, absence of having an ambulance.
Thank you so much for starting that.
So they would begin the, the paramedic training or the fire academy. Obviously, a cost-saving measure would be to start with six. That would supply the two per shift. We run a forty-eight, forty-eight ninety-six shift. Most are, most departments have moved to the forty-eight hour on, ninety-six hour off, the two days on, four days off from the traditional twenty-four on, forty-eight off. Either way, there's still three shifts in a row, A, B, and C shift. It gives you two per shift. You have to have a paramedic on board in ambulance. It's, it's preferred to have a second paramedic. That's when you get back into the EMT, you could have the EMT drive. The goal is to move to that. Any person can provide that same level of care. So obviously, for cost savings, you could look at just at a bare minimum. To start would be six personnel phasing in three more as we continue down the road. So by year three, we highly recommend it, and that moves into, next slide. This goes into that continued staffing. We would continue to look into grant funding. So there is a safer grant, staffing for adequate fire EMS response. It's provided through the Assistance Firefighters Grant. It's the umbrella. Grant funding is not guaranteed. There's no real determination on timeline of funding would be if we would be selected as something we have to apply for. Several cities got it. Several cities get it pretty often. There's no limit that we could apply for this every year. We need to try to help fund those. Because what it does, it moves down into, that funds the position. Not necessarily the specific employee, but the position for three years, full-fund three years of salary pay. And, but the city is under the obligation to keep those positions for an additional five years. So that's when we come into those further down the years, we have to have that budgeted in to continue to pay that outside of that. Those safer grant funds only apply to that bringing on the new position. So we would have to have, we couldn't budget for six new positions, approve that, have that in budget, and then get the safer grant to pay for it. That's part of that funding is for to be able to achieve those positions. So that's where the zero dollar budget funding for those positions comes in. Next slide. So this is a breakdown, the six versus the nine. Now, this is, again, we're just looking at the staffing cost right now. It is a large percentage of this program. So the numbers are there, six personnel. This eighty-five thousand is kind of a market salary for firefighter paramedics in the area, but that does include benefits. That is not their additional salary. That includes their insuring and coverage, things like that. Now, again, that allows for the two per ambulance personnel to not jeopardize fire response. It'd be a minimum needed to implement that service. Again, the preferred would be nine. That gives you the additional staffing available, so if there's people taking time off or other needs, things like that, we don't shorthand anything. This muscle ought to be available, full staff and utilized squad. So council did approve us the mini pumper a year ago. It is still on its way in. That was the intent of that. The cost to run a fire truck all the time on all these medical calls is expensive. We're trying to cut some of that cost. The goal is to still provide an ALS engine. That way you have those medical capabilities. If an ambulance is not available, if a squad is not available, then we can at least provide that extra care initially on scene. But the plan was along that time to use the squad for that, because it's a much lower costly of operation to run a squad, which is a, it was a Dodge.
You're on Dodge? Ford, Ford, it's coming?
Uh, yeah, five fifty. It's, it's literally replacing our, our rescue truck. But that allows for two staff members on that. That's currently, again, without an ambulance, that allows us to have. Most agencies will send the ambulance and the fire truck following, because you never know when that changes and that you need that additional personnel on hand, which happens often. You get calls that don't seem to be that type of medical call, and you realize you need two more guys, three more guys to assist with it, whether it's care, lifting, moving, access, whatever it be. So that squad gives us that ability to still have our fire truck manned and in service for an additional call if needed. Next slide. Some of the financing offices, options, there's apparatus and major costs. Find something to be considered, low initial cost, implementation for the acquisition of ambulance, and hard equipment costs, structures, Lucas device, power loading system. Those, Chief Shantin has spoke with the, one of the major providers, I guess, Striker, that they do a six and a seven-year payment option on that. So all the things that are needed on the ambulance, we can spread that out over time. Next slide.
What about Lucas devices?
Lucas devices would be good.
CPR device.
The one you see, we strap on, it does automatic compressions. Power load stretcher system, that's where everything's going to, so you eliminate back injuries, things like that, loading patients in. It's more stable and safer for the firefighter and EMTs, paramedics as well. It's kind of the standard loading system in to the back of the ambulance. Remain are some of the costs. It's shared with loose equipment, disposal items, licensing, regulatory fees. So this comes into the next slide, into the second, where you'll see where the major costs and then some of the ancillary costs. The licensing, regulatory fees, medical direction, that's something that's an annual cost. Training, annual, fleet maintenance, obviously annual, narcotic storage and management. And then obviously, the loose equipment is all your other stuff, bandages, Band-Aids, IV, solutions, medications, all those costs. What annually would cost us for the call volume we have for those, that, the specific equipment. Next slide. This is why I brought Chief Shantin up. He is a little bit better at probably explaining this, because he broke all these numbers down for this. He's ran me through it twice. But I'm gonna ask him to go ahead and kind of step in and run through some of these numbers with you.
Mayor, Council? So this is a, a reflection of what I project the implementation cost would be for, for year one for one M I C U ambulance. The reflective numbers you see for the ambulance are an annual lease payment that reflects one ambulance for a total billed cost of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and some change. Broken down over a payment with six point one percent interest through government capital. Okay, that reflection number for hard equipment, which was referencing back to the stretchers, your Lucas CPR devices, McGrath, video laryngoscopes, things of that nature, is encompassed in row two for hard equipment. Again, an annual payment, year one for one ambulance, year three, year five reflect two ambulances, one frontline, one reserve. Staffing, this is the worst-case scenario with no grant funding, and this is reflected as nine fully certified firefighter paramedics ready to go. Year one, year three, year five, year one being seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, or a thousand dollars, I should say. And year three and year five are a reflection of, you know, projected step raises, merit base raises, things of that nature. Loose equipment is things like backboards, stair chairs, KEDs, things of that nature, things that you need to educate people from car wrecks in the event that they're injured. It takes into consideration the C-spine precautions, cervical spine injuries, things of that stuff. Training, this incorporates cadaver labs that paramedics need to receive in order to be highly tuned on their skills, making sure that their knowledge is current with the times. As many of you guys know, medicine is constantly evolving and changing practice. Same thing for physicians. It's no different for paramedics. Ancillary costs, this is your medical direction. So in order for me to be able to practice as a paramedic in the field, I have to have a doctor that says you can do these things. In the event that I have to pick up the phone and call this physician for an order that is not out, or I'm sorry, that is outside of my protocol, medical direction comes into play. This is reflected in that along with things like CMS bonding, Medicare bonding, TML waivers for the ambulance, things of that nature. Flick maintenance is, quite frankly, tires, oil changes when ambulances break down, because believe me, ambulances break down. Okay? And then the last thing is all of the stuff that we have to do with the state of Texas in order to be compliant. This is also DEA fees for narcotics credentialing. So we will need to carry things like pain medications. Once the ambulance backs in, we will carry medications like paralytics. So in the event that we have somebody that can't maintain their airway, we need to paralyze them to secure an airway. Things of that nature. Those medications must be stored. They must be tracked. They must be under lock and key. And we also have to, in the event that the DEA walks into the city and says, let me see your narcotics records, we have to produce those. your narcotics records, we have to produce those. That's what that main line, that last line item encompasses. And then total projected expenditures for the year is a reflection of those numbers tabulated together. And then one line below that is a reflection of our current call volume at a thirty percent return for an average billing of twelve hundred dollars. That is what I anticipate for us to be able to recover through insurance and Medicare and Medicaid billing for the ambulance. And then the very bottom line is total out the door cost minus county subsidies, PIDs, things of that nature. Any questions?
So with a low cost of one-ten a month, right? And that's about one point three million. At the bottom line, how do our pocket, it's only going to increase compared to six twelve?
That's what's expected. And we generally tell your contractor, you're going to go, they're going to start good and it's going to, it's going to go up. So the call volume will increase, homes will increase because we're adding homes to the city, so that goes up from there. Now, again, some of that is recoupable from the PIDs. So that bottom number, the six twelve, just used that first year as an example, that's going off just that, again, that thirty percent. It's never guaranteed in what you might recruit from insuring for a standard call. So that's a pretty good number to go on based on what other agencies are able to recover from that. There's a little bit in there, there are not in there, that's accounted for, and that six twelve would be some of our county run reimbursement. Currently, the number we're at reduces once we go to that, just for those type of calls. They pay a different amount reimbursement for a fire run than they do for a EMS run in the county. But there's still at least two, two fifty, somewhere in there that's recoupable based on current numbers. Stephen, if you want anything on PIDs, things of that nature, they also might play into some of that bottom numbers there.
And so that bottom number is factoring in overall cost of not just the residents, but also the folks that live out in our unincorporated areas that are in our public improvement district. So as every year we adopt an SAP, our service and assessment plan, their fair share would be factored into that. So that's not six hundred and twelve cost to the city, but point, that's six hundred and twelve cost to basically our region. The share, the PIDs will obviously pick up their fair share of that portion of that cost.
What percentage would you perhaps estimate?
Uh, there are two thirds of us. We have roughly twenty-one hundred homes in the city. So you could basically say we could pay about a third of that cost.
That helps.
So that's basically rooftops.
So if we were looking at us, rooftops, you know, we would say Oak Point would probably, our cost to our residents would probably be an additional two hundred thousand dollars. Now, you take into account if we get that safer grant, that payroll number drops.
That covers first three years.
That covers your first.
And you can apply, if you continue to apply, but again, if you continue to apply, that applies for additional positions. So there is that little.
And that's a pretty common grant. So I mean, I feel pretty confident if we hire a grant consultant to help us to write it, we put it out there, I feel pretty confident we'll get it. It's a very common grant.
ESD one, east west side of the county, got twelve, I believe. Denton just got another nine positions they apply for every year. At Oak Point, we've got nine or twelve positions. The region needs it, so the grant's somewhat pretty available, not guaranteed though.
But there's no reason why we shouldn't.
Shouldn't.
Oh, absolutely.
And same thing, even if, you know, if we went with another agency for providing services and some of that's repaid back to them, that's not all in the city, you still lose some of that controlling ability. And that's concerning as to, you know, where does it continue from there? Does it stay at just medical services? Does it branch off to, hey, you want to take over in Oak Point, we can provide you different things within years to pay all of it.
And chief, with the mini pumper and one ambulance, when will we need a second ambulance?
With, I think with lead times, we're looking at within a year or two, by year three possibly. The goal is you always want to have a reserve. If you're able to acquire that first one, it's a pretty good idea that it stays good and healthy and service ready without problem for the good first three years. Fire service is rough on vehicles, police service is rough on vehicles. But if you get a new one, you know, it's expected it'd be pretty well, but the goal would be to have a reserve as soon as you could.
So we would double the first line in year three, if that's what you did.
If you waited till year three, yeah. So those numbers in, in column three do reference to that top number for ambulance, that references two ambulances as additionally, you've got other hard equipment that's supplied to ambulances. Same nine personnel, or six if you went that other out. Loose equipment in addition, the loose equipment stays about the same because that's based on call volume. The training is about the same, the ancillary cost is about the same. So really, it's just the maintenance goes up a little bit if you have some additional costs on a second unit, and then the actual, the lease payment on the unit itself and some of our equipment.
What does this do to response type?
This probably keeps us easily within the four minutes.
As opposed to what you're saying.
ALS, our ALS care works on the scene without transportability within that same timeframe. But again, we're still looking at the fifteen to twenty range for all these ambulances, longer if it's mile point, longer if it's, probably roughly the same if it's Lake Cities because they're on the same dispatch, they just have the distance. Still the issue across the country.
And what's the backup plan if our own vehicle is deployed, now you need a second one?
That's where if you have to, you do, you do have to lose something unless you can afford to have all the people on all the time and always be available for every call. At the point we are moved to full fire, paramedic, train personnel, you could, you could be concerned if you lose the operation of a fire apparatus, but those numbers can jump off and still run a second ambulance.
But I guess what I'm saying is, you've had occasions where you've had an ambulance deploying, another deployed. With our, with our plan here in year one, two, getting into year three, are you going back to Aubrey, going to Little Elm, going to Lake Cities, where are you going to, where are you going to pull from if you need?
If we're busy, if we have something on and have a second call, it would still be those through a kind of mutual aid agreement that's in place. So that doesn't also doesn't exempt us from having to assist them if we're going to need it, we should return. That's just, that's a kind of mutual aid agreement that should, that actually should be in place. Generally, if you can provide your own service, then you help with not having to need it as often from somebody else, but it doesn't exempt you from providing it if they need it. So, and then that's kind of where that second ambulance comes into place. It's not fully staffed all the time, but in the event we have the number of personnel we need here, we could run down to three on a fire truck. I'm still a firefighter. Two could come off the truck, run that second ambulance for a second call while the first call is already out. Having to be able to have one, two call at a time, doesn't happen often, happens sometimes.
Ask questions, can't wait for the end. Is this the last one?
I think one more slide, two more slides. This one goes into some of lead times on an ambulance. The present most ambulance manufacturers are given thirty-six to forty-eight month lead time. It's the same for fire engines. Construction for ambulance doing this begins due to chassis shortages, Ford Dodge COVID is still affecting us. Preliminary conversation is that Chief Sanxing was handling with Fraser, which is an ambulance that Aubrey's used for years, by the point uses them, we like them. They're looking for the ability to be able to provide it in ten to twelve months based on that international chassis. That's different, some agencies prefer the Dodge or Ford chassis, internationals are not chassis. It's just they have, they've put themselves in a position where they have some of those available.
And that chassis is reflected on the title slide of the PowerPoint. That's, that's a reflection of that chassis.
Last slide. If we were to be able to move forward, we have a start date, a very, I don't know, hopeful start date of probably into the twenty-six year, October twenty-five, so after that, but it starts. Obviously, depending, it's very fluid, things change, and obviously, pending funding, additional input, we started to complete the licensing process with the state, CMS credentialing, secure the drug enforcement agency, controlled substance licenses, other stuff that has to fall into place during that timeframe. But that's kind of a projected timeframe on what those agencies in timeframe to get those things in place is. And then, of course, the, subject to safer grant funding to award, help with some of that initial cost.
Can I have a question? Let me start with a comment in the end with a few questions. So I put this on the discussion list for last meeting, and the reason for that is, I will never say this, but there's certainly our citizens that within City of Oak Point would say something to the fact that we're infirmability in the fire department, why we need to have the ambulances? Let's just give them a little, I don't know how much to pay you, we'll pay less or pay more, but we're not going to be able to get ambulance services at Oak Point, all the staffing, all the stuff you have to buy, and the uncertainty, et cetera. I think you, this is a good presentation, but I think we need something, city needs something before we dive in all the way, that says, here's your alternative, and this is why we're not going with this alternative. We're going to go with a city on ambulance for this reason, here's some cost comparisons, apples, apples, cost comparisons, per run, per hour, per day, and whatever, per employee, I don't know how you calculate those numbers, but you need something where you're saying, we could do this, or we do this.
You want specific numbers from those other two agencies if Aubrey was to continue us in some manner or Little Elm?
Well, I mean, something as simplistic, it's not seventy-four, it's not three-four, and it says, if we're going to do ambulance service, we're going to do ambulance service, here's the model, we're going to boil it down to.
An economic decision.
Yeah, I need to make an economic decision as opposed to a quote infirmability decision.
The economics come into it, and that's, that's a good example of the numbers that have been in discussion. No hard paperwork from them yet on that.
I mean, they, I think economics was good, it was better than I expected, but I think we need to boil that down to, to a public friend and kind of, how do you call it?
Easy to understand. And I agree with John on a simple economics analysis.
Correct.
But in addition to that, do you have any doubt that this is not in the best interest of the citizens of Oak Point to have?
I personally do not have any doubt that it's in our best interest.
It'll provide the very best quality of service right here.
I think that allows us the ability to do that. If not, it's another chief's decision. It's another crew's mentality, their work ethic, things like that. We have no control, but we determine who works for us and who doesn't. I think there's still the timeframe issues with another agency. There's still some delays in that response time. Again, I agree that is probably the norm out there. Why do we need us? Why don't we just pay for it? Because you don't need it till you need it, and then you realize why you should have paid for it to save the three minutes, two minutes, sixty seconds here.
Yeah, the time difference to save a lot.
It can be noted that coming up from Little Elm, there can be accidents, there can be instructions that there's.
We are locked in a position where we have one way in, one way out in some areas, and that could easily be, well, I say that one way from one direction, yes, but obviously, if it's only one way in, it's only one way out.
Yes, it's not, it's not the causeway anymore, but it's still one road that can back up, have an accident, other issues.
Right. And so that, and that also, again, not that we could be available for every call in every instance, there may be those chances, but you increase those odds. Particularly if Little Elm was now increasing by, again, I had a individual with the department make a comment to me that they're pushing five or five thousand calls a year, by some of these other developments, they're going to push closer to ten thousand calls a year. Somebody running those calls, they're running those, they're not running here. Because those are their numbers already, not ours, that's not including ours. I feel personally, we need to look at the best. Yes, there are options when you look at paying for this, you don't have to, the headache of dealing with it, but you lose a lot of control with that. You lose a lot of things that I feel are more important than the cost side of it.
Intangibles.
If the, if the cost isn't truly drastic, it's not worth that loss of that.
Controlling your investment. In your timeline here, what's the gap between our current contract situation and start date?
That, I believe we are in the late three to fourth year, if I remember correctly on the contract renewal. So that's putting us pretty close to right at the end of that contract. So even if, I feel even if Aubrey felt they could still adequately provide us service, that number's coming anyways.
You guys, if you guys are probably going to do some kind of a lot of like in Little Elm or Aubrey, but free lunch or something.
Yeah, I don't know if they would go for that, if they would want to do a kind of a à la carte, pay for what you get when you get kind of thing, that would just be a question we'd have to ask and reach out to them.
Have we engaged any outside consulting or advice to help us formulate?
Determine that's what we had on.
And the financials related to it versus?
Stephen, you have an option that we might be able to pursue with that?
I'm not familiar with anyone that does that. I feel like we went through our numbers pretty well, we know what, we know what the numbers are from Little Elm, just based on what we know they're offering and other entities around us, and we can kind of base that on our cost, and we can run it through. It's tricky, I ran ambulance service for a lot of years, and they're, they're, they're interesting to run, but, you know, I feel the numbers that we came up with were pretty good, based on, on the numbers that we actually came up with during our own research and talking to Aubrey, we kind of matched. So that made us feel pretty good based on what their budgets were. And we didn't ask them, they offered the number. So when the number came back roughly what our number was, felt like we, we hit the target pretty close.
So but in the interest of John's point, would it make sense for us to run our numbers by someone that could help us put together the right financial analysis to make the case?
I think you've already made your in conference review and analysis.
Yeah, I'm not sure who to reach out to get that, don't know, we'd have to kind of do that to see if there is somebody that kind of does that for us.
Through your association.
I'm assuming they're using the same data we have access to already to get all those numbers and it's just math. I don't, I agree, it wasn't needed in the past, that's why we're here now. We, it didn't make sense in the past. And the past call volume was so low, Aubrey's response times were great, they were here within six minutes. And I mean, they were here within the five, maybe even four and a half minutes when I originally started.
And five years ago, the price was right.
Yes. It's crazy that that contract is there.
Yeah, I mean, even at this point, Aubrey's talking about maybe trying to half staff an ambulance here during the days, but they're wanting to be, they're wanting to be compensated for that. So keeping ambulants here to reduce our times from fifteen to twenty minute response time down to what we would consider acceptable in that four to five minute range. You know, they're, they're talking probably a quarter of a million dollars to do that, and it's still their ambulance.
Yeah, it's still their ambulance, that we're just, we're giving them a house to put it in.
Right.
For calls, they're already contracted to come to, we're just saving them the overhead and time and travel. It's increasing the benefit of the citizens because if they're responding from here, that's great. Still coming with the same cost of not having any control on that.
And the house is another issue, isn't it? Because.
The house is another issue. We're trying to figure out where we would house these individuals, where we would put the unit. Unit can't be outside, it has to be inside. It has to, with the narcotics in it, you have to have them locked up, it needs to be secured to a degree, plugged into the shorelines, keep the refrigeration systems and ACs running.
So which is the end of the facilities discussion.
Right, which is what we've had some discussions about.
I think ultimately, ultimately, we need to kind of high level, as I call it, high level comparison. If we went down this path, there's a cost, and intangibles, and if we went down this path, it would be this, these scandals. Intangibles would be in five minute response down to twelve minutes or fifteen minutes.
It makes all the intuitive sense in the world. I concur sitting here knowing that, you know, growth is, is, we're going to have more rooftops and we're going to need this eventually, and now probably it makes sense to make these decisions. So I think what we're looking for is a bulletproof analysis that we can get behind and say, this is the right, right call.
Okay, more specific numbers in on what another agency costs?
Not that we don't need insurance, it's a specific, well, some of, some of that in terms of response time and things like that, but just how it's presented and the package, and how, how we can, as they're saying, make it clear and easily digestible for everyone.
Thank you for all your hard work. I can see a lot went into this, but I know you spent a lot of time on it.
I think your presentation was on point, you know, what we need to do in the very years.
Right.
Yes, so thank you.
Yeah, it's a good presentation, thank you both.
I will send this, we got a plug, we'll take this.
During the comments from the audience that will be made. Will you allow any comments?
Come on.
Well, before I'm going to first of all, I'm going to present a question today. You really did a good job. And I'm just sitting here, I couldn't see the entire screen, and I'm all for the ambulance service, but my biggest fear is the cost. Because when I was in city council, I did a lot of research in towns this size, a lot of them, one nation burden, running the ambulance was too great, it affected their budget. Things you didn't, they didn't plan on, like, was there a cost up there for the building service? I didn't see that, and it probably was. Was there a cost there as you more, if you responded to more calls, then you're going to need officers to appear in court. I didn't see a cost up there for pensions, I didn't see a cost up there for insurance.
It was a fully loaded number.
Yeah, all the numbers are fully loaded, yeah.
Well, I hope you make that to the public, you're going to have to build a building. Well, I hope you make that appear to the public, you're gonna have to build a building, and you're gonna have to have the maintenance on the building. Just while I'm saying this, it's a need, I'm not arguing that. And Stephen, you and I had a discussion for an hour on that topic. In one city you were in, you had to eliminate the ambulance, uh, ambulance service because they couldn't do anything else. They underestimated the cost. All I'm asking you is, and I like great suggestion here, let's, let's get someone to work with the staff here, because they're experts in what they do, but they're not financial experts. And I think we need to move very cautiously over here.
Thank you for.
Because we have so many needs, and you know where I stand on this, you know, we need growth. But, I mean, it, it's, it's, we need to do something, but I, personally, I don't, you guys have all the facts, all the information. I was always hoping that we were going to some improvement with our two acre lots down there by CBS, and we've joined venture with Little Elm, but, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, we will proceed cautiously and we will be diligent.
We'll see you, John.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments before we move to the next agenda item? Okay, we're on agenda item number twenty-five, discussion about future road repair plans. Stephen?
Someone's gotta kind of previously recap some of our, uh, our CFP projects, uh, in the last five years. We, we basically went through all of our CIP at, at this point. Um, keep in mind, these numbers don't, don't take into account any, any engineering costs, but, uh, uh, but just the hard cost for the, for the construction. Uh, Lake Shore Boulevard, Martin Gale, we spent, we spent about one point nine million dollars redoing that. Uh, we did a project down in Eagles Landing, it was roughly nine hundred seventeen thousand. We spent about one point three million in Emerald Sound, and then we did one point nine million redoing Mar Top. So, in the last five years, we've done about six million, six million eighty-eight thousand dollars for the projects. And currently in pricing, we have a CIP in pricing, we have it at Max Bowden, we spent about eighty-five thousand in engineering. And the construction cost estimate from our engineers to do Max Bowden down to the boat ramp is about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So that's the Crescent Oaks project that we did, I highlighted it in yellow. Uh, it came around Lake Shore at the bottom and picked up Martin Gale Trail and went down the center down to the boat ramp, again, we spent one point nine million dollars to do that project.
Was that in twenty twenty-one, and it went over into twenty twenty-two?
Yes. And again, these numbers don't reflect the engineering costs, this is construction. Uh, that was the Eagles Landing project that we did, we spent nine hundred seventeen thousand dollars uh, on that particular project, which basically took Eagles Landing Boulevard and then two, two of the streets, first two streets going back to the, kind of to the north on those projects. Emerald Sound, uh, we spent about one point three million, which picked up Emerald Sound Boulevard, um, starting at, uh, was it Opel, or? My glasses, I couldn't read it even if I could.
I think it was Opel.
Is it Opel? Yeah. And then it, it went down, I think, to Diamond Point, and made that curve around Diamond Point, picked up all of Aquamarine, and it picked up all of Alexander. And these, again, were on our CIP, uh, previously. Then we did Martop Road, Martop was one point nine million, it was really a joint project with, uh, the Mud to the North, I think they paid three hundred thousand dollars for that project. Uh, the school district also paid three hundred thousand for the project, and they gave us three and a half acres of land, uh, which we haven't decided what we're gonna do with that part yet. But that project overall is about one point nine, roughly two million dollars. And then this is the project that we currently are getting pricing on, we finished the engineering. Uh, so we're getting pricing, that project would likely start in April, May, depending on when the contractor is ready to do it, it was a change order for the Martop project. Uh, just to finish out that project, to take Lake Shore all the way down to the entrance of the boat ramp. Then these are some future projects, and I know they're hard to see, um, very hard to see. Uh, this is the McCormick project, we received funding on the McCormick project, since there's way to blow that up. I don't see where to make that bigger, I wonder if I get out of the exit out of presentation mode. Where? Should I say exit show? Magnify slide, that's what I'd like to do. Does that just magnify that area?
There we go.
There you go. So, uh, that, that is estimated for twenty twenty-four cost to be roughly one million five hundred fifty-one thousand. We're currently having our engineers give us some probable cost on that project right now. Um, let me pull that up a little bit. We do have some partners on this at this point in time. Uh, Denton County is, this is part of the bond funding, so they would pay for half of that, so whatever half of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one, one point five five million is. Uh, and then we have the Bloomfield project, that they're going to be responsible to pay for at least one of these lanes back to, uh, to Winchester, so they'll pay a piece of that as well. So the city will be on, on fifty percent of the hook for sure on this piece from, um, um, Winchester back to Naylor slash Yacht Club at that point. Okay, how do you know it gets to go to the next slide? So this is the, the Naylor Road project, this was actually our number one priority, we, we, we talked to the commissioner about we talked to the commissioner about, uh, changing this from our, our number one priority to uh, our number two priority, just simply for the fact that we've, we've got so much cut through coming in on McCormick and that roads in, in, in poor condition, that, uh, we felt like this could be put off, uh, to our number two project. But that project is estimated at about four point six million, and the city would be on the hook for half of that, so about two point three million. I don't have it on this slide, but there's also a, um, three hundred thousand dollars for a traffic signal that, uh, Denton County has committed to at Martop and, um, FM seven twenty, that will go in.
Thank you, county judge, any needs?
Absolutely. This was our CIP statement moving into twenty-four. Um, oops, come on. Pull that up again a little bit, so you can see. So the top numbers from the proposed budget, um, we had, uh, three point eight six million that we're moving in, uh, we, we we were expecting to spend with, uh, with one point nine, we had planned for projects for this fiscal year, and then our portion of the, the Martop Road, I'm sorry, the Yacht Club Road project, uh, was bringing us down to a balance of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two. Uh, now that we've kind of switched those projects, uh, then those numbers will actually change. But that would have been our balance at the end of, of twenty-three, twenty-four, officially of twenty-four. This, we have a, we have a quarter cent sales tax, uh, that's generated to, uh, to help with road improvements. Uh, we were using the majority of that to fund that, uh, Max Bowden ex, uh, extension. Oops. So looking at our bond funds, our, our voters approved five million dollars in bond funds, uh, we've issued one point eight million dollars of the bond funds uh, that we used towards that, that six million dollars of roads that I had showed them that first slide. So we still have three point two million dollars available, and, and recommending to council, what I'd recommend that we do is we use those bond funds for our interior streets, for more of our neighborhood streets, and then the monies, the one point eight million that we're reserving annually for, uh, that we've been using to fix our interior streets, that we, we reserve those monies to fix our collectors and our arterials like Martop and, um, um, not Martop, we fixed it, but, uh, um, Martin Gale and, and Yacht Club, and those, those roads that carry traffic to our neighborhoods.
You're really talking about McCormick and Naylor Yacht Club, right?
Right.
The arterial streets you're talking about?
Right, 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 so take that three point two that we have available to us, let's issue that debt, and then we can use that. We, we've not done a project yet in, in Yacht Club Estates, uh, I'm, I'm thinking we need to probably look at re-chip seal in those roads in there. Uh, our smallest project, if we're wrapping back around again, our smallest project that we did was actually in Eagles Landing. Uh, we probably need to circle back into Eagles Landing and pick a project. We could come back in to Crescent Oaks, and what I'd recommend in Crescent Oaks is we come in with a kind of a level-up project, where we come in, level up, mix, and we just re-chip seal the streets. Those streets were chipped sealed, I think, in ninety-seven?
I leave it there.
Nineteen ninety-seven, so, so they've lasted since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, they need to be re-chip sealed, leveled up, and see if we can get a few more years out of them. We've had some, we've had some issues with them right now. Um, it's winter time, hot mix, cold mix is part of a rock right now, so it's difficult to get out and make repairs to them. Uh, but, uh, you know, as the weather improves, we can go out, get out and make some repairs. But you can come in and do a, a level-up project with them, where you come in and you mix and uh, mix smaller areas where you have bad potholes, stabilize that subgrade, and then you come back in and you, you let it chip seal back over those roads. And that's what I, I'd look for recommending.
So, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
What you're saying is basically in between fixing potholes and, and tearing up the whole street and making a new street, this, this chopping and, and seal the roads.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go back and mix the full street, I'd come back in, you can, you can take a hot mix and come back in and level up in areas where we have potholes and hardened edges on the ways within, and areas where we have like massive pothole areas that we just fill and fill and fill, those areas you might wanna take and, and mulch and mix in some sort of, uh, Portland or something, stabilize that area and roll it and get it good and sealed, but, but you're not, you're not going in and doing total rehabilitation, uh, full death reclamation
Right.
of all the streets, it's a, it's a, it's a simpler process, it's faster process, and it works well. I mean, quite honestly, if you look at a lot of your state highways, they, they are chipped sealed. If you're driving on a chipped sealed road, you don't realize it, but, but you are.
Can you just define what chipped seal actually is?
So chipped seal is, uh, usually it's a synthetic rock, it's not even, it's not even a real rock, and they make a couple of different grades of it, one's a smaller pebble, and it's usually for quieter surfaces, and we use those on typically residential streets. And they make a larger aggregate, which you typically find on like a state highway. But what they go in and do is they lay down a layer of tar, and then they come in on, on top of that layer of tar, they, they drop this chip seal, this rock on top of it, and then they roll that back and forth, and they broom up the extra, and that, that creates a nice road surface.
May I comment? Oh, and this chip seal was not designed for residential streets. It's county road and boat, it's designed for straight line traffic, it's not meant for carrying bats why they fall apart so bad, especially in the resident quarters. We have big potholes on our house, and you're right, the base is not in too bad a shape in most cases, it's the chip seal, but the more chip seal, you just get the same problem. You gotta put asphalt, wearing surface down to stand that whole town.
So I ran some numbers on, on Crescent Oaks, there's roughly about five and a half to six acres of roads in there that we haven't paved. Uh, applying, applying some numbers of a hundred and ten dollars a square, square yard for construction, um, based on some of these estimates, that would put replacement of all Crescent Oaks roads about ten million dollars. And that would be given if there were no, if there were no, uh, drainage or anything, that's strictly road surface. So we don't really have ten million dollars, so. So, we gotta kind of have to look at the highest and best use, and, and while maybe, yes, you're correct, uh, they're maybe not the greatest for turning surfaces, also, and th- these are streets that are designed to be twenty-five miles an hour, so, you know, it, it's, it's a good surface, it, it works, we've had it now since ninety-seven, it's been in bad shape for a few years, but it's way overdue, so.
That is the process that was used in the main stuff, which is sealed.
I could have dropped down there, and you're right, this, this pothole on top of it.
It's very bad, everything.
I mean, it was pretty down there.
Started, everything from here on down, all these roads right here are horrible, horrible, horrible. I mean, bad, almost like it was down.
That would be my recommendation if we were going to do, that you start in that lower portion. The upper portion, they're straight roads, they're not as bad, uh, they, they do have issues, but you know, maybe you look at these lower ones, these Highlands and, and horseshoes and, uh, uh, doggies, and those type of streets, maybe that's your phase one. And then you look at the upper portion where you have, you know, your Sagebrush, Mulettas, Cedar, uh, uh, I don't see Cedar, where was that? Whatever that street, Concho, yeah, so.
Actually, Stephen, if you've driven those roads, none of those roads that you're mentioning have big problems. If you get in there and drive the Crescent Oaks roads, you will very quickly know which roads are riddled with potholes, like Highlands only has two or three on the entire road. Uh, Bronco Trail, Saddle Trail, Pony, uh, those are just riddled with potholes and are in mess. And some of them, the roads completely washed out.
Yes, ma'am, and, and that's what I was saying, I, I don't know the names of all the roads, it's the ones that came to, to mind,
Right.
to the top of my brain, but yeah, I was saying that lower portion is far worse than that upper portion.
Yeah.
So that, that lower portion, in my opinion, would be more along the lines of a, a phase one, let's get to these first and see how we can best fix these, and then look at phase two being that upper portion, that flatter, more, uh.
I think those lower, those lower roads, they're a separate, they started out with a separate, uh, uh, you know, um, origin story. I think those are predating the town, those are from when this was a, like, kind of a holiday fishing community for people coming out of Dallas. There's some of the A-frame structures out here, I think are structures that date back to that time. So those, those roads are completely, you know, different timeframe of construction and everything from everything else.
The bottom line is, if you say there's two miles of roads in Southern Crescent Oaks, for example, you can either, you can get a half a mile of not real last road, or you can get a two miles of pretty good boat, or you can just keep passing, going, following, so, passing, you gotta get something in the middle. You can't make airway, airplane runway services if you go a hundred yards of it, it's a pretty bad average. It's, it's a, it's a flying scale kind of city.
I think if we could just look at how to cost effectively do the roads in a manner that will make most sense long-term, and address the worst-case scenarios first and move on.
Yeah.
An amazed-in approach, you don't have to do it all in a year.
Well, no doubt, I wasn't suggesting that.
We need to get it on the CIP.
Yeah.
Right.
Before we get too near the end of this, Melissa Vaughn, do you have something else? Melissa Pestetella? This is Bill, oh, Melissa Pestetella, Pestetella, six one zero, Terrera, Crescent Oaks. With the capital improvements for the next year being on the agenda, I request having a permanent line item added for continued infrastructure repairs in older neighborhoods. This could be for roads, water lines, electrical, I know that's not all the city's responsibility, but you get the idea. Items that impact the health, wellness, and mobility of the residents. Would also like to see what can be done about overhanging branches or bushes encroaching in the right of way. I wasn't paying attention, and I got a face full of branches walking about two feet in the road today on, uh, Lake Shore. Uh, CO has several line spots that make for dangerous conditions, I believe the city owns ten feet on either side of the road, it would be nice if those were kept clear, or we got an ordinance that the owners were required to keep that clear. Some of these encroachments block signage as well.
Put that letter on YouTube, she's cut out.
What's that?
Check YouTube letters in, in.
She may be watching right now. I hope I gave her a good read.
Any other comments, counsel?
One more question, though. One more question. What's the next step?
So what I'd like to do is maybe bring back next month some recommendations of where we need to go on CFP. Maybe get some costs, because I don't really have a good cost on what chip seal is running right now, but maybe get some costs on what chip seal is running to see effectively how much we could do with chip seal, how many linear feet we can get, or how many cubic feet we can get per, you know, dollar. And then try to figure out, you know, based on that, how much can we actually do? And then, you know, we need to be looking again, too. I think Yacht Club Estates, we haven't touched anything in that area.
Not until they get done building.
I'm sorry?
Don't until they get done building with all the semis going through there.
I was gonna dump all the rock in front of your house and start there, but.
Mine's fine. If I'm happy with mine, they might just blow it and pull over.
But we need to address that neighborhood as well, and then we probably need to come back and address, you know, some of the worst roads in Eagles Landing as well. Eagles Landing, I think we probably spent the least amount of money in to date. So we probably need to go back and get these guys. My thought would be to come this kind of U-shape here and come around this road and maybe tie it back in here for like a phase, get that part done. They don't have a lot of roads in there.
Is that gonna be chip sealed as well?
These roads are not currently chip sealed. But chip seal, you can, I don't really have any issue. I think chip seal extends the life of roads. So it's not been, it's been. Yeah, it's been my position that, you know, that you take an asphalt road and extend the life of it by chip seal in that road. So.
Yes, Jeff.
I haven't heard anything about time frames. Is there a time frame for McCormick?
So you're looking, engineering, engineering takes a year. It's another thing about chip seal. Chip seal doesn't take much to engineer, you know.
Is that what you're talking about on McCormick?
McCormick, no, no, no. McCormick will likely be a concrete street. But these streets, like, even if we did asphalt, if we did any asphalt, you're looking at nine months of engineering. So then nine months of engineering, couple of months to get it bid out, you know, and then get a contractor to start from engineering to starting, you're probably looking at a year.
Steven, a couple of questions. One, based on our recent experience with doing asphalt repaving in some of the neighborhoods, including Emerald Sound, and sort of the disappointment that I think some residents have with how that turned out. Do you see chip seal as maybe even being a better option than what we ended up with in Emerald Sound?
You know, I think in Emerald Sound, we had a couple of areas that had some issues that the contractors going to have to come out and fix. Matter of fact, the engineers met with them, I think, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. And they are gonna have to come out and remix that section of the road, because it had some hemispherical cracking. And we can normally expect straight line cracking. It's this nature of the beast sometimes when it's a hundred and fifteen degrees outside. And it doesn't rain. It's horrible in concrete, I mean, asphalt. But I don't know that you remove an asphalt road and put a chip seal. Now, would it be a good idea to take that road, put a chip seal over the top of it? Probably a good idea, yeah.
So I would just, my comment would be that, you know, the asphalt work that we see, especially with our climate, is not always bulletproof either.
No, it's absolutely not.
And the other question is, while you're gathering up some better numbers of what costs might be, can we also in Crescent Oaks begin to, can we dispatch somebody to begin to assess what your priorities would be and what roads you would want to tackle first, or what neighborhoods you want to jump on first and sort of build a priority so that we can get a timeline?
Right, right. So yeah, I definitely want to look at that lower part of it. And again, if I don't say the road, I'll say I'm not including it. But when it comes to mine, is doggy and, I don't know. I don't know all those roads, but I do drive that neighborhood quite often, so. Not enough that they call the cops on me here, but.
What's this in the bottom right here, oh, I'm short on the location.
I'm assuming that's.
That's Jack's place.
Bridge is gone, yeah. So there's some over, it's others. What, how many are there now? Seven or so?
I'm not sure. One gave up, so.
I'll be gentle.
We're off topic.
How bad should it get?
Well, yeah, I'll definitely get together, and you know, if I know what chip seal costs, I know roughly then how many people we can do and stay within a budget. As I said, we have one point nine budgeted this year, and we haven't touched that yet. So I think we can go a long ways with that in chip seal.
Well, back to the bond money, I think we've got a bond money for reasons to do. So just use it, use the words of time.
Yeah. Well, you don't lose it, but we definitely should be using it. I don't, we've got those monies to fix residential streets and not McCormick and not, although granted, they are residential. But, you know, I think the monies were intended to fix the streets that our residents live on, not necessarily use. So let's use those monies to go in and fix their streets in front of their houses, and let's use our monies that we reserve to fix more of our arterials and our collectors.
Any other questions for Steven?
Oh, the capital improvements projects, the list order, is that published anywhere?
We did them all. We had a list that, it is online somewhere, and there were like five years of the projects. And yeah, we actually finished them all at this point.
Okay. We're gonna be doing these things. It'd be nice for the public to look and see.
So when we generate a new list, we'll definitely publish that list. I always like it where it's, you're one, we're gonna do these streets, you're two, we're gonna do this. Because then, yeah, then they can't point out and go, you know, I can reasonably expect in year three, or whatever that year is, that they're gonna be doing my street.
Anything else for Steven? Thank you, Steven.
You bet.
Agenda item twenty-six is future agenda items. Does council have anything? And I'll remind you, it's always good to send an email to Julie with your item. If there's no progress, business.
We came up to see this pretty quick. How do we respond to items or actions from citizen input? I don't know. We said, council can't respond to citizen inputs. And the city in front of them can't correspond to everybody. But how do we, should we make a list or something, or maybe a kind of bullet points or whatever that says, Jack, you spoke about this, and it sounded like a good idea?
It's in the minutes, don't you worry.
You can respond with factual data. We can't respond with a back and forth conversation, but we can respond with factual data, and then we can follow up with her after the meeting, so.
I think we should kind of master this, or perhaps say, or master this, or we can say something specific. We just don't go into the ether a lot. Some people might suggest, oh, they can't, like, the council, people, well, it's never happened.
We typically take notes of what the public comments were, and we try to get the right person to address that issue and have them to address it.
Just talk about that process briefly.
Is there, I filled out something called a complaint form. And I don't like that title. I would just like an issue thing, because I like the good things in addition to the bad. But I never seen, I just have it on the website. I stumbled on it. But I don't see, you know, I put in there, do you want to be contacted? I said, yes. But I couldn't find where, you know, I have a number that was assigned, that's something new. I've never seen it. Are you talking about the I word?
So it does generate a number. When you get submitted, it'll give you a number. And then you can keep that number, and the code enforcement official, who is pretty good about using that system, enters notes back in. So when you go back in, you can enter your complaint number, and it will tell you what he's entered into, what he's done.
I would like some information on the website on how that works, or what you just told me. I just stumbled on it, quite honestly. I didn't know there was that process. And instead of me trying to call somebody, emails, like you're saying, gets lost somewhere. I kind of like this, because now I have a number and I can go back and look at it. I'm gonna keep sending emails. Who do I send this to or?
Thank you. If there's no progress, business. If there's not, the meeting is concluded. Thank you. Thank you, everyone that came tonight.
I just thought it was great that finally it showed up, not just John's issue.